This is the Orlando Sentinel Editorial Board interview with the candidates for Orange County Commission District Four. We have with us today Mercedes Fonseca, Carl Pearson, and our incumbent Maribel Gomez. Today, we are going to be talking about some of the issues that are facing Orange County right now. And I'd like to start with a question about the events of this week and the housing ordinance, the bank of housing measures that was passed by the county commission on Tuesday. One of those measures may end up on the ballot later this year, and that would be a cap on the amount that rents can go up. Do you support putting this on the ballot, and why or why not? And we'll start with Ms. Fonseca.
Sure. Thank you for the question. I currently do not support the measure the way that it has been proposed by the board. I do agree that tenants do need notification if there's going to be a change in rent. However, they're not taking, or we're not taking, a holistic approach with regards to the issues at hand. There are, aside from those that are renting in apartments, there's also issues within mobile home park communities that also tend to be age restricted. According to the report that was commissioned by the county, this cap is really only good for one year. So I don't know that really what's being proposed is, in essence, going to resolve the issue at hand. I think it's complex. There's multiple facets, and this is not, this is not a holistic approach. This is a Band-Aid.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Ms. Chris. Yes, this was discussed in the BCC, past BCC, where we agreed for the 60 days notice and the 5%. And we are having in September the Bill of Rights workshop as well. And yes, in August 9th, we will be voting into the rent control, which I still have a lot of questions with no answers. So I'm still looking into it with a lot of meetings that I will have before the 9th. And I'm not ready to say if I support it or not. There is a lot of things, like I said, in the BCC that need answers, and we want to know if we really are providing to the families that are right now in distress and having all these issues going on, false hope, or we are really providing a hope for them. Is this going to also, you know, bring some remedy to the problem, or what? So one of my suggestions is that I want to see more into the partnership with the community services and so, so to see how we can more, you know, be proactive and help the families. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Pearson?
All right. Thanks, Chris, for the question. So rent controls is a very complex and universal question that we all need to get our hands around all across the country. When it comes to Orange County and Orange County Commission making decisions, we need to have a comprehensive approach to this. We can't, as Mercedes says, put on a Band-Aid. If we were to, to answer your question directly, I absolutely believe that we need to have the 60-day notice or 90-day notice, or some type of notice for the people who are be affected by higher rents. Number two, I do agree that the Bill of Rights is necessary, and we, as the community members, absolutely need to have a Bill of Rights when it comes to entering a contract with a landlord. I do not, however, believe in rent controls as it's been presented today. There are a number of different ways that landlords can get around rent controls. If you say it's 5% or the Consumer Price Index of 9.2%, what the landlords will simply do is create assessment fees or application fees, administration fees, tax fees. They're going to get their money any way they can, and rent's not the only way they can do it. So it's a slippery slope to the deterioration of our community when you have landlords putting caps when they also had higher increases in their insurance rates. They've had higher insurance premiums that they had to pay. They had the higher maintenance costs. Inflation is not immune to being a landlord. So there are a number of different things that occur when you're saying put a rent cap on it. It's not just as easy as putting a cap and putting a pause for the people in the community. So focusing on the community is what we need to do as opposed to just putting caps and limits to solve our problems. We need a comprehensive approach to problem solving.
I would like to follow that up with one of the other components of the housing problem that Orange County is facing right now is supply. And many, many good growth proponents in the county believe that the best hope for increasing the supply while maintaining a good quality of life in Orange County is to encourage and increase densities in urban areas, which mostly lie inside city limits. But to do that, there had to be some corresponding constraints to growth outside the city limits and also, you know, inside the urban boundaries that have been set. What more do you think the county commission can do to discourage sprawl and to encourage healthy patterns of growth? And let's start with Mr. Pearson.
There's a number of different things that the commission should have been doing three years ago, in my opinion, and I think they could still continue to do it. One is the county should have been on a buying spree, buying as much land as they possibly can get their hands on. Because once you have control of the land, you now control what goes on the land. And now we have the possible solving of the issues where you can densify that particular parcel. So that's one thing that the county commissioners could have done. Now, I also agree that, you know, the urban sprawl needs to be managed and has to be slowed a bit. There needs to be more densification in the areas. We all agree on that. But the county can't do it alone. We need to have what's called a public-private partnership. We need to get together with these private companies and private entities that can, that has economies of scale when it comes to building better, faster, cheaper, more efficient than the county can. The county cannot answer all of the questions at our hand. So we need to engage the private sector as well in order to manage these types of challenging issues. So those are two of the points that I have with regard to urban sprawl. And I can get into more, but I'm apologize, I may be running out of time. So thank you for the question.
Okay. Ms. Fonseca?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So in my opinion, incentivizing developers, government needs to work alongside these developers. Also, again, there is, like you, like, to your point earlier with supply, there's also, you know, issues with permitting and getting these products into the market. So, you know, that's another issue that's being faced. However, I also think working with private property owners, because there are some that want to rehab their personal properties and convert them to attainable housing. So I think that's just another way in which we can partner with private property owners and also incentivize developers and work with them to be able to provide some attainable housing.
Thank you. Commissioner?
We need to, but that's a very good question, Chris, because we also have been discussing that in the 2050 Vision. And actually, I had a meeting this morning that it lasts like an hour, which we in Chapter Two, there are 10 chapters. And what we discussed today was exactly everything that, you know, have been said. But what I'm going to say is, yes, the partnership with the, with the private sector is very important. The incentive is very important in different ways. And right now, in my district, we have the Kissimmee farmers, which is something that we also, you know, want to maintain a rural and, you know, have been working very hard to maintain in the way, the way it is. So yes, we need to be, you know, to have some sustainability. We have to, you know, like, like we said this morning, we have to look for all these partnerships. The county or the government cannot do it by itself. We are growing very fast. Central Florida is like coming up very fast. And we have to identify, like, for example, there is a lot of acres in the county that, that could be available to build these homes for, you know, not only affordable, because sometimes our people cannot even afford those affordable homes, but low income, low-income homes that can be, you know, that they can rent and then they can own. I mean, there's a lot of good ideas and a lot of things that we want to bring in together for the best of the community. And yes, the supplies have been, you know, increasing. And but that's when we have to work with incentive and try to make it work for the best of the community and the families. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to step in with a quick question, if I could. I know that the, the proposed penny sales tax increase that's going towards transportation that Mayor Demings has backed. I just wanted a real quick answer from all of you as to whether you, whether you support that tax and, and what more specifically would you, would you like to see used for? Let's start this time with Mr. Pearson.
Great. That's a great question. And that's definitely a hot-button item. So in short, I do not agree with the one-cent penny tax as has been proposed today. I know that we need a robust transportation system. If we're going to say that we're going to be one of the top counties in all of Florida, we should have the best airports, we should have the best schools, and we should have the best transportation systems. And the transportation systems don't pay for themselves by themselves. They're going to need help in order to fund them. So how do we fund this transportation thing, this, this problem that we all know that we have? Well, you can just put a one-cent penny tax on the ballot and cross our fingers. That's not a good idea. What I would suggest is that we look at other counties who have these issues similar to, say, Hillsborough County. The Hillsborough County state tax, the sales tax, is 7.5%. It's 6% to the state, 0.5 for student capital or school capital, 0.5 for indigent care, and another 0.5 for local government. In Orlando, Orange County, we have a 6.5%, 6 to the state, and 0.5 to the county. What I'm suggesting is that, that instead of the one-cent penny tax, how about a half-cent penny tax? We address those dollars to the transportation challenges to the tune of $300 million a year as opposed to the 600 million. And that other half cent goes to other issues that we have in our county, like funding our fire, police, and others. And people say, Carl, you know, those dollars are allocated per silo. You can't do that. Well, I will challenge the system and say, you know what, you can do that. And we need to reprioritize the way that we're spending money instead of taxing our ways out of problems. We need to find a better way, better solutions than placing a one-cent penny tax for only one thing. That's just not a sustainable thing. And sustainable meaning the proposal is 20 years. That's just unsustainable and doesn't make any sense. And the people who are receiving the benefits are going to have to pay that tax in tough times. And they'll never see a new bus route for six months to a year. They'll never see a new bus for months. So it doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I appreciate it. Commissioner Gomez?
Yes. Thank you, Jay. Jay, I was one of the voters that, the votes in the commission that passed it for the residents to vote in November as a referendum. I have to say that, as a commission, I have been having a lot of meetings with different residents and, you know, constituents that commute a lot from the east side to the west side. And you know what I mean? From Avalon or the west side, it could be, you know, hitting Christmas. And so to work in the theme parks like Disney and so on, that's very far. And one of the, the things that we discuss in the, in the commission was to see if that's going to help connecting the east side with the west side. But beside that, I have to say that having a group of people that was saying, Commissioner, put it in the ballot and let us vote. But then I have another group that say, I don't want my, my taxes to be increased. I just want a better transportation system. So in that sense, I put it all together. I said, okay, well, then you will decide in November. So saying that, I have to say that it's very important that we all, you know, provide a very better, good public system, a transportation public system to, you know, all the families and, and people that we have over there that doesn't have, you know, that transportation. But let's see. Whatever the community decides, that's what we're going to go with. And if they doesn't, Jay, and I have to, to complete, if, if the referendum doesn't pass, we still, as Orange County government, has to go and get another alternative for the people so they could have that better transportation system.
Understood. Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Fonseca?
Thank you for the question. So it's a 1% increase. And so I've never disputed the fact that we need a more robust transportation system here in Orange County. With that, you know, it has already been voted to be placed on the ballot. Voters are going to make that decision. And it's a decision that they're going to need to, to make based on their own current economic situation, because this increase will impact them in some way. So, you know, if it passes, it's going to bring a lot of jobs. We certainly do need east-west connection. I just, I'm not sure that we've necessarily explored every option available where taxpayers do not have to pay for that increase.
One of the things that has been identified by some people is why Orange County does not seek to take some of the restrictions off the use of tourist development tax money. And I wonder if any of you support seeking additional flexibility for use of tourist development tax money, or if you think it should remain dedicated to the uses it's already allowed for? And let's start with Ms. Fonseca.
Sure. So with TDT, it's something that's set by the legislature. I am not in support of opening that for other uses. And so that should be protected for its intended use, and it needs to stay that way.
All right. Commissioner?
Thank you. Actually, Chris, I don't know if you all remember, but when I was one of, supported the opening of the iDrive CRA, you remember, for flexible spending when it was, and that's why it's all extended to roads and different other things. And I'm very open to ideas. But right now, with all the crisis that we are going into and all the things that we are going and facing in our community. So I don't even think that the money, the TDT money is enough to cover all the crisis and the needs in the county. So for now, I, I like, I like it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
I believe that tourism is the backbone, or one of the backbones, one of the pillars of central Florida. And the funds that have been allocated through the TDT should, in my opinion, should remain. There are a lot of challenges that remain in that market, in the industry. They were hit hard. And there's, it's not a matter of time until another serious challenge will come through. So, and sure, I believe that it should not be touched. It should remain. And we should have better ways of reprioritizing the dollars that we already have in our general fund. The $5.4 billion needs to be better managed, better prioritized, to the extent that these types of conversations don't keep coming up. Thank you.
And along with same group of questions, I had one more, one more that speaks to voter trust. In 2020, by 86 and 89%, Orange County voters approved two amendments that protected what are called the rights of nature, and, and specifically directed the commission to protect Split Oak Forest. Since then, a rights of nature lawsuit has been filed and that would challenge the state's attempt to preempt that ordinance. The county is not a party to that lawsuit, is not defending Orange County voters in that lawsuit. And the, the proposal to put a road through Split Oak Forest has proceeded. The county has not revisited its vote to support that application, which will be across the Asiola portion of Split Oak Forest. Taking those two votes in tandem, do you think that there is a problem that, that the commission might have with the trust of voters who are being asked to approve big-dollar referendums or electing commissioners? And let's start with the incumbent. Commissioner?
Thank you, Ms. Chris. And that's a very good question in regards to the Split Oak. And you know that that's have been a very heavy topic since I started here as commissioner. And one of the voters that, you know, the votes that came in that voted against it was me, because I, I really think that it's important that we, you know, follow with what was said before. And it was to protect the forest. And, you know, then it came, you know, the referendum with 86% of the population of the voters voted against it to leave it the way it is. And it's still going to be going through. So in respect, in respect to the, to respecting the voters and so, that's why I voted no. After, after the vote came in, the policy says that you have to follow MBCC before, you know, to resent and to bring back, you know, the topic for discussion. And Commissioner Bonilla did that, and it fails. I was the vote that, you know, seconded, but it failed as well. And this is, is true what you're saying. What, what this brings is that the people, the voters or constituents doesn't trust the government, because they, you know, we say something, we promise something to the people, and then we do something else. So saying that, that's another thing that I wanted to say in regards to the sales tax, that we put it, and we push it so much that, you know, there's committees going on that would be for the transparency of the whole money that would come if, if it passed for the sales tax. So it's important that we, as government and leaders in the, in the, in the community, always think for the best interests of the community and the people that votes. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Pearson, would you drop that one?
Well, if I remember certainly right, that was a little while ago. The question was voter trust. The issue with rights of nature, particularly with Split Oak Forest, does that jeopardize voter trust? And I, and I'll say this, I believe in democracy and the democratic process. I believe that when voters cast their vote, that it matters. I think that as stewards of the leadership, based on their votes, we should be, it should be incumbent upon us to make sure that the decisions that the majority would like, we need to come to fruition, as has been promised, to hold your word up as a leader in the community. So in short, I believe that it should remain. It's disappointing to hear that there is such a thing as voter trust. But then again, we live in the age of the January 6th commission hearings. So, you know, there's always going to be a little mistrust or distrust here. But I believe that generally speaking, that we should focus on whatever it takes to keep the, whatever the vote was, we should maintain and keep that vote and maintain the status quo with regards to that. And I'm, and I'm sad to hear about the voter trust. It's really disappointing to hear that, but we'll get through it. And if it comes to an Orange County commission situation, we will handle it accordingly.
Okay. Ms. Fonseca?
Sure. Thank you. No, I think it's very important to uphold what voters, what they've decided on. And so, you know, majority, a majority rule. So if that in fact is what the voters have voted on, then as a commission, we need to uphold the voter's decision.
I wanted to get a little bit into, into personal history for you guys. I wanted to ask, was there one, and I've addressed this mostly to the challengers, but Commissioner Gomez, I'd also like you to answer. But what was the one issue or the one moment that sort of put you over the top and said, I need to, I need to run for this office? Or if there was one specific thing, can you tell me about it? And let's start with Ms. Fonseca.
Sure. So for me, it was the, you know, the kicking the can down the road. So there's need, there needs to be decisions that are made, because the inability to make a decision will keep residents in limbo. And so some, you know, these positions aren't positions in which oftentimes, you know, are popular, votes are very popular. But, you know, decisions are, decisions are difficult to make, but they need to be made always with the best intention of, of the community that it's going to affect. And so for me, it was the ability to make a decision and prevent residents from continuing to be in limbo.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
There's a couple of different things, one of which was the reprioritization of funds. You know, you hear the news, Bill, we can't do this, and we can't do that because of funding, lack of funding. And here we have 1,000 people coming to the state of Florida every single week, 330,000 people coming to Florida, making their residency every year. Every three years, another million people, that's tax dollars coming in, and we can't find the funding to do X, Y, and Z. I find that disheartening, and I find that disappointing. And I think that we need to really review our prioritization of our funding and how we allocate our funds. And that's one thing. And number two is transparency. I don't know what everybody's spending money on. I come home from work, I turn on the news, and, you know, what happened? I don't, I don't know. There's a connectivity disconnect between local government and, local government and the people. And I figured that I have the expertise, I have the time, and I figured I'm going, I'm going to go ahead and close those gaps, whether it be repartaging of funds, allocating of funding, decision-making as Mercedes mentioned, and of course, overall government transparency. How do I get to that point? And I, I don't have the answers, but I know that these are the low-hanging fruit items that I know that if I were to come into office, I'll go ahead and close those, close that gap.
Thank you for that. And Ms. Gomez, I guess, as the incumbent, it's a sort of a two-part question for you. What, what was it that drove you to, to get into this office in the first place? And what is it that keeps you coming back to work?
Thank you, Jay. Is, is very, that's a very important question for me. If everybody knows, my heart is always being passionate to serve the community, which I continue doing. And in the beginning in 2018, I mean, after I continued learning about how the county runs and so, you know, I pray and I said, you know what, if this is something that I can go in, because I was still, you know, I was doing it for more than 15 years, serving the community, working with DCF, and all that thing with families and reunification and, and services for them was very attractive to me. And I'm very passionate with what I do, and I will continue doing that. And that's why it bring me every day, you know, back to the office and so, and, you know, taking care of, of the people in need and in distress. And that's what I continue doing. And that's why it's so, so heavy in my heart, this whole, you know, rental issue and crisis that we are facing with families here.
Thank you for that.
So my question is a little bit close to what Jay just, just asked, but more focused on, on different communities. District Four has one of the most diverse populations in the county, including having one of the largest Hispanic populations and colored communities, underserved communities in general. I wanted to ask and start with the opponent. Do you think the county and the district is serving these communities rightfully? And what would you do differently? And then I would like to ask the incumbent, Mrs. Gomez Cordero, if reelected, what are the key issues to serve these underserved communities that you would either continue working on or that you wish you could potentially start working on? If we can start with Mr. Pearson?
Yes. So the answer is, we're doing a good job in the, in the community, Maribel, to your point. I shouldn't address you, I'm sorry. The incumbent, we're doing a good job in the county, right? But I think we can do better. I like to think of District Four as being the better district. I don't think we're the best district. I don't think we're there yet. I like to consider that we're always going to be considered the better district. We're always trying to be better. And with that, I believe that we should be focusing on healthcare. Healthcare in underserved communities is going to be critical. I mean, it's only a matter of time until there's another health pandemic or health crisis that comes along, and we need to be prepared for that. And I'm not considered, I'm not sure if we're 100% prepared for that. I'm not sure if we are actually prepared for another catastrophic anything. For example, another catastrophic hurricane comes through, and the underserved community comes through. I'm not sure, and I don't have the confidence, and maybe we do have it, and maybe we are ready. But again, that leads it back to transparency, right? We just don't know. We just don't know. So for the underserved communities, I want to make sure that the least, the low hanging fruit of being safe in your homes, the ability to afford homes, the ability to have access to education, to better education and teachers, and also better healthcare. I think those are the low hanging fruit items that we absolutely need to get right. And then we can talk about other, I have to say, less prioritized items that require less funding. So that's how I feel about the underserved communities in Central Florida, particularly in District 4. We can do better.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Fonseca?
Thank you for the question. So while having served as chief of staff for Orange County under an elected official commissioner Pete Clark, there was a program called Two Generational, which is actually out of the Aspen Institute. And that, that program actually is evidence-based and it takes a holistic approach. It takes an entire family. The purpose is to remove barriers and to help these individuals, these families become self-sufficient. So in my mind, typically the faith-based community is the first line of defense in any community. And so take a look at what dollars the county is currently expending. Let's look at the faith-based community to see what services are being offered through them. And let's see if we can partner and remove any duplication of monies being spent. And let's further the services that we can provide and bridge those gaps.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gomez Cordero?
Gracias, Jennifer. That's a very good question. I have to say that we have been doing all of that during this time. Remember that these four years were very difficult, these two years with COVID. And my office never closed, it was always there. You will see me everywhere because the people needed it. They needed their information, they needed to know what was going on. And there was being coming, a lot of money has come to the county and to other counties through Washington DC and through the state. And I have been going to mental health. Remember, we have a very high crisis with mental health issues with whatever it is in mental health. And being a professional with, you know, a mental health professional is very important for me that we serve that area as well. Is our district, District 4, is a huge of the whole, you know, county. Everything is there. We have a very nice, modern district. We have different areas. I had, I remember that, you know, before the redistricting, I had Taft Community. Taft Community was one of the lowest, you know, poor community in District 4. And I had a whole project with neighborhoods and Jason from the office to provide that whole beautification thing. And it went now to District 3. But yeah, I mean, we have been working very hard. Yes, every day is a day to improve and to do better. So that's what we're going to do and that's what I'm going to do with my administration these next four years. Thank you. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you very much.
Well, I think we have time for one more question. And, and I'm sure you had brought up the subject of mental health. And that is an area where the need is never going to be met. But right now, is the county really investing its resources in a way that will make the most difference? What changes do you believe should be made? Just to go in a little more detail about that.
I love that, Chris. I really do. And that's something that I have been bringing also, and I have in some meetings with different agencies in the in the county in regards to that. You know that there was a very good chunk of money went to Aspire and Aspire is providing free therapy for the for the people, for the families and so, but they are providing for adults, not for children. So I have received a lot of phone calls also from parents that doesn't know what, you know, what to do or where to go in regards to provide therapy for the kids. So that's something that I also want to work with. If we can, you know, come in with some kind of partnership and get together, work something very solid to provide better, better services. And also, one of the things that I requested was to allocate more money for the for the agencies and nonprofit agencies are in the grassroots, that are in the field, that are out there, that have that one-on-one contact with the people. So that money can go straight to them as well and that services can be provided. Because we have a lot of, you know, a situation going on in the whole county, but in different areas. And we can see how, like Jennifer said, we are diverse in population and the people living here. But we can see how the mental health have been increasing in the Hispanic community and the African-American community. And we have to be more, we have to be proactive. And we need to continue working on this because this is not going to stop, like you said, Chris. This is how, you know, stop it is not going to stop. Are we going to alleviate it? It depends on us. And that's why we have to work and continue working for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And this, Mr. Pearson?
Well, it comes down to my comments that I made earlier regarding the reallocation or reprioritization of our funds. I'm convinced that there are some ways and some dollars that can be found that could help support or offset our situation with regard to mental healthness in our community. I'm convinced of it. It's a question of looking at our budget and reprioritizing our line items in our budget and finding out what are our priorities, really? Truly, is it mental health? Is it transportation? I mean, is it our first responders? I mean, those are all very critical pillars of our community. But which ones, which one deserves X number of dollars versus the other? I think that mental illness and mental health should be addressed by the county. But again, it should also be a combination of Republican and Republican partnership because quite frankly, the county can't do it by itself. But the county has the ability to have the dollars to allocate to these types of things. So as commissioner, I truly believe that we take a closer look at our priorities and then we see where we go with regard to mental healthness. Thank you so much.
Well, can I add something to that, Chris? And I just wanted to add that also there is a program that is developed in the sheriff office, which is, that you know now is the behavioral unit, which we have a psychiatric, a social worker, which will go instead of arresting people that have, you know, any diagnosis with, you know, whatever, whatever it is, autism or anything. That unit will go and, you know, de-escalate whatever problem it is. So we can avoid also, you know, arresting them or having them locked up. So county is doing, you know, and like you said, Pearson, to get together, partnership and, you know, give priority to what it is. And that's a topic that mostly comes to the BCC, the mental health. Thank you.
Ms. Fonseca?
Sure, thank you. So the county has a central receiving center. But aside from that, Two Gen is also a way in which would address those issues. Which Two Gen would really be looking at local nonprofits, again, partnerships. FQHCs are a great, a great partnership, which federally qualified health centers, which in our community, we have community health centers and we have True Health. So which also offer mental health services. And that, you know, they serve the uninsured, underinsured, or if, you know, if you do have insurance, they also service you as well. So again, I think that is something that Two Gen would be addressing.
Okay. And we get started a little late, so I'm going to squeak in one more question. Orange County, in terms of the sales tax revenue it sends to Tallahassee compared to the revenue sharing that it gets back, may be the biggest donor county in Florida. What more can the county commission do in concert with the legislative delegation to try to get more, a more fair share of that revenue back to Orange County? And we will start, Mr. Pearson?
So let me, I'll say this. Anytime we start talking about revenue share and reallocation of funds, we need to make sure that the legislative bodies, whether it be local government, state government, and even the national level, we need to make sure that we're all working together and we all agree on that particular point. So if we don't agree, it's probably going to be a dead stop anyway. So let's get the agreement and as soon that we have the agreement to have those revenue shares be moved forward, then we identify the right people to bring forth the change and then bring it forth to to leadership to make those types of decisions. When I say leadership, I mean the voters. So that's what I see in terms of reallocating of our funds is making sure that we are in lockstep with our legislative bodies on a state level, agreeing on these types of situations, making sure that the desire for it is there. We make the assessment, agree, and then we can move forward from there.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you. I have to say that we have to continue lobbying and doing what we do in partnership with economic development and everything in order to have those fair shares with the state. It's important that we, as the local government, look into for the best interest of the local people and business and so that we could get more from Tallahassee. Because it's true what you're saying, Chris. This is one of the, of the county that most, you know, revenue it makes in Florida.
Thank you.
So I think, you know, working in unison with our state reps, I mean, our constituencies overlap. So, you know, the needs in which each community, whatever it is that they need or have, it is, it's essential to work in conjunction with our state reps and make sure that we're advocating for the same constituency because at the end of the day, they do overlap.
Thank you so much.
Also, I forgot to say, Chris, that we get our fair share from the tourism dollars as well. So, thank you.
Well, we have come to the end of a very, very informative and enjoyable time talking about all of these issues. I wanted to thank you all for joining us. I would like to give each of you the opportunity to make a brief closing statement. And as always, Jay will keep our time. Ms. Fonseca, would you like to start?
Great, thank you. My name is Mercedes Fonseca, candidate for Orange County Commissioner, District 4. Hablo ambos idiomas, inglés y español. I was born and raised here locally. I'm a UCF graduate. I'm a product of immigrants and I hold a master's in business administration. I believe that my experience, my education and my service set me apart as well as the relationships that I've developed amongst the community, the private sector and the nonprofit sector throughout the years that I've worked in each. And so I look forward to earning your vote. And thank you again for having me on here today.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
Great, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for giving us the time to share our thoughts and our feelings about the county. We're all very passionate of it, of course. Again, my name is Carl Pearson. I'm running for Orange County Commissioner for District 4. I am the son of immigrant families. I've come to the United States back when I was five years old. I lived in Florida for 45 years, 20 of which in Central Florida. I made my home here in Central Florida. My wife is a teacher here in Central Florida, in Orange County specifically. I have a master's degree in business. Went to University of Florida, then Rollins College. I have a passion for serving. I mean, whether it be at my job, passion for serving. There's been a situation where I'm the homeowners association president of my local community. I wanted to take it to the next level to be able to say, okay, I'm going to serve this community as best I know how with the skillset that I've developed in corporate America. So the three points that I want to bring up is advancement of public education. That's one of the tenants that I want to share with everyone and know that that's an important factor for me. The prioritization of our first responders, that's also a prioritization for me. When I say we got to look at the reprioritization of our funding. And also, we need to be able to manage our growth in a very smart and sustainable and promising, prosperous way. So we need to figure out how we can manage this growth of all these tens of thousands of people, whether it be moving them, supporting them, putting roofs on their, over their heads and food on the table. We need to figure out how, as a servant, how to figure out how to get all of these things done. So with that said, I'm running for Orange County Commissioner and I would like to think that I can hopefully humbly ask for your vote and hope for your thoughts and consideration on August 23rd or before. Thank you.
And we will give our incumbent the last word.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm Commissioner Maribel Gomez Cordero, District 4. I am here for all of you who are watching as well. I would like to request your support and allow me to work four more years to serve in the community as I have been doing it in these four years. I have to say that I have been very busy during these four years, including after and during and after the COVID with doing different events with, you know, food drives and special events, food drives. Also during the COVID, I was providing the Hispanic people with some recap from the press conference of the mayor in order for them to, you know, be keep up to date with what was going on. And that was very, a good thing to do. And I always, when I do my vote and I am going to go to provide my vote in the BCC, I always do it in the best interest and listening to the community first, which is a big thing for me. Listening to the community, to the residents, to the constituents. And making any choice or any decision in the board for the best interest of them. I will continue doing that and I am not afraid to back up when the situation is very hard and the developer doesn't want to negotiate. I still go in front of them and provide my vote for the best, you know, for the community. So I will continue doing that. You know that you can call me anytime, my office is always open. And hopefully, right, I see you these next four years to continue working with everything and everyone as I have been doing. God bless you all and thank you.
Thank you all so much. And just to remind everybody, this race is open to residents of District 4. And it will be on the August 23rd ballot. If no candidate gets 50% of the vote, it will move forward to the November ballot. And thank you so much for joining us and thank our candidates.